Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. We did have an executive session, so just bear with me for a moment. I have to read through some things quickly. The time is now 6:30 PM and the executive session has been concluded. And Robert's not here. So for the purpose, our executive session council received an update from the utilities director and city attorney's office regarding the real property transaction with the Boy Scouts concerning a future reservoir project. And we council gave negotiating parameters to the city attorneys regarding pursuing quiet title action and entering into a development agreement with the Boy Scouts. And of course, a development agreement will be drafted eventually, and that will come to the public in the future to be heard by the public and the council to vote on. So with that, if, let's see. All right. Well, all participants in the executive session, please state their names for the record. Hillary LaBarre. Kelly Case.
Rusty Neal.
Robert Zulawaga.
Frank Connors.
Cheryl Harvey.
Catherine Nakai.
Erica Romberg.
Erin Vassalati.
Suzanne Leclair.
Kip Wiley.
Karen.
I did already, but if you want to hear from me again.
Nina was Nina Williams, our city attorney, also present. She and she's not zoomed in right now, right?
No, I have been noted for the record.
All right. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meeting law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, Suzanne, please take roll call for the council meeting.
Thank you. Mayor LaBarre.
Present.
Councilmember Kate, Mayor Pro Tim Case.
I'm here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Zulawaga.
Here.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America. To the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this evening, we're starting with ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And we have three A appointment of John DeVoe to the Pikes Peak area local government citizen advisory committee. And our presenter for that is Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor LaBarre. This is an exciting time for the city to have John DeVoe back with us and willing and able to serve again. John was a member of the citizens advisory committee for PPACG for many years. And when he comes to the podium, he'll be able to tell you how many years he served, what he does in that role. And for a while, he resigned from that. They were going to move, decided not to move. We're blessed with them staying in the community. John has reached out, stepped up, and would like to serve in this role this evening. He's here to talk to you this evening about serving in this role. I'd love to welcome him to the podium so you can ask him any questions you may have. Thanks. It's so good to see him again.
They keep sending me the packets for this. I've not gotten off of the PPACG CAC. I get this every month. So and it's it's a bad time. It's three in the afternoon. A lot of people to work on. That makes it more difficult to do that. There's a lot of money involved with Pikes Peak area council governments. I think Kelly is the representative for the council for the city.
Actually, Hillary is. I'm the alternate.
Here's the alternate. Okay.
But she usually goes for me. I go to a lot of most of the meetings, though.
Lot of money involved. Big projects involved, and we're just the small potatoes in the whole thing. However, having said that, as different projects come get completed in the springs, there will be money left over. And maybe there'll be $100,000, $200,000, whatever. And if you've got shovel-ready projects on the drawing boards, and every city's got them, and you've got them here, let's get done that way. Or maybe there's a sidewalk section that you can't complete or something like that. You can keep they got to be ready to be submitted, and you're you're engineer and all that can have that read. And somebody's got to their horn a little bit. Because there's there's a lot of people on that committee. And I think it's good that we have people go to it. And like I've been watching all these packets come, and I figured I'll be glad to go back and do that again. And if you have any questions, I ask.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Just get them sworn in.
I second Carol's comment.
Glad to see you back.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
I think all of us are glad to see you back here, John.
It's hard to stay away. It gets in your blood. It just does. I was nine years on console and then all the other ones, so.
Planning commission.
Time commission, all that stuff.
You're just kind of a fixture, John.
Yeah.
A good one.
It's okay, but I can still I can still walk. I gotta live on oxygen now for all the time, but I'll get up there. If I pass out, just take me back to it. Not really. But if you have any questions, fine.
Anything further? Can I get a motion then?
I'll make go ahead, Kelly.
I'd like to make a motion to approve John DeVoe as our citizen representative on the Pike's Peak area council of governments citizens advisory committee.
I'll second that one.
Do I need the Jeopardy song again? Just kidding.
No roll call voting?
Is it not working?
It did come up.
It's more fancy now, John.
Okay. Yes, Carol, let's get on with the vote.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. And with the mayor's permission, I'd like to administer the oath of office to John. Thank you.
So thank you, John.
I shall write here and repeat that. I, John DeVoe, solemnly swear.
Sowling swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
Block, and it says.
The charter of justice.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
City of Woodland.
And it is faithful and one.
That will faithfully perform.
Ladies and members.
Ladies and members.
Of the PPACG.
PPACG.
Citizens Advisory Committee.
Citizens Advisory Committee.
Upon which I'm about to echo.
On which I'm about to echo.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's it. Perfect. Yes. Thank you so much.
Right, counsel. Item four additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. We have none. We are off to item five consent calendar. And we can either do A and B together. We can do it all together, or we can do it individually.
I just have a on page eighteen of our packet. It says, would counsel like to give the awards final review? Didn't know. I thought we were going to leave that in the hands of the crab.
Oh, you're referring.
This would have been the August third minutes.
Yeah, it's August third, page eighteen of three hundred and sixty-three.
I think you're correct, Robert.
Yeah, I think it should be no rather than yes.
So no.
Yeah.
Okay, this isn't is counsel in agreement with that?
Could you just say it again?
Oh, sorry. Okay, so regarding the $15,000 and the allocations, crab went through and did all that. I thought we concluded that would the question is, would the council like to give the awards a final review before being distributed? And I thought we said no, we were going to leave that in their hands.
You are correct.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
So I will make that amendment and ask the council approve the minutes with that amendment.
Okay.
I'll change the yes to a no.
Sure. The council, how would you like to handle the consent calendar?
And only one other comment. I have to abstain from C.
Oh. I was too involved in C.
Gotcha.
So I have to abstain.
No problems.
You're just sitting in a public hearing. You're not.
Yeah.
C is just setting a public hearing.
No big deal either way. So that's fine. What was your other question?
And my other one is on just to comment if Erin or someone can just explain on page twenty-seven. It's in the expenditures. Mountain Star Investments, we paid them $11,230 for acquisition easement. Just where was that acquisition easement that we purchased? That was for the Highway sixty-seven slope easements on the west side of the highway there as north of Tamarack. Through the slope for the widening project for Highway sixty-seven, we needed to acquire a little bit of of that more land there. Yeah, okay. For that project. That was all. So those two and.
Counselor, is everybody good then with taking them all together?
I am.
With the exception of item B as amended. So if we could get a motion.
Do you want to keep separate the one you have to abstain from?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented with the amendment to item B. B, the minutes as stated by Mr. Zulawaga. Is that good, Suze? Perfect. Thank you.
I'll second it.
I'm going to do a manual vote for this. LaBarre?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Nakai? Catherine?
She disconnected from the.
Okay, Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Look at us rocking through. Councilmember Nakai figured she she didn't need to help us.
She's got that.
Do you want to give her a second to come back on for?
Catherine, we just took the vote for the consent agenda. Do you approve the consent agenda? She might be having difficulty.
Okay. We'll give her a second because we've got item number seven. We have no unfinished business. Item eight, we have no ordinances on initial posting, but item nine, we have two quasi judicial public hearings.
We have number six.
And oh, yeah, I skipped six. So I got so excited, you guys. Okay, so we'll do item number six.
Okay, so first speaker this evening is Andrew Austin. Me, sir. Eric, are you going to do the time for us? Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I just had a quick question, observation, and hopefully something we can address. Wondering, after three years driving through the school zones and seeing kids for, you know, the half hour in the morning, half hour at night, just wondering, why do we have the school zone at 20 miles an hour from 7:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon? When I was a kid, it was like the first two hours of the day, the last two hours of the day. Is it possible to change that? I mean, and then it seems odd to me. We had that, you know, set space where the kids five feet beyond that sign and the speed limit is thirty. But it's twenty as soon as you get inside the sign. I don't know. It's just like I love to protect the kids just as much as anybody else. But we don't need to have schools on the middle of the night because the kids aren't there. So that's kind of my point.
Okay, so just Mr. Austin. So you know, the way we do public comment is we take comments from the public. Counsel does not interact or respond. We at least should say thank you for your comment, but we can have you give your contact information to staff, and they will get back to you on that. And maybe there's a state law or a county law or something that requires us to do it. I don't know. But they can be in contact with you and let you know what the rules are and see if we can get you filled in on with it. So.
If you want to go in, he's telling you to come right to him.
I actually asked one of the officers one time. He said, go to the city council meeting. So.
Right. Well, we 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 can direct staff to get answers for the general public, and we just don't usually do back and forth because sometimes it leads down a rabbit hole that is unsavable. So yeah, but since chief's back there, you're welcome to discuss it with him. And if his answer happens to not be satisfactory, you can always contact our city clerk, and she will get you the right person as well. So you're welcome.
Not a huge deal. I just figured I'd ask.
It's a good question, especially for those of us without kids. We'd like to know.
The next speaker this evening is Gail Garrick.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Gail Garrick. I've been a resident of Woodland Park for thirty-five years. And I'm here tonight to mention again, because Holly Sample spoke at the last meeting about the increased polarization she had seen in Teller County and invited you to attend the Braver Angels introductory meeting we're hosting on Tuesday, August twenty ninth from six to seven at the library. The purpose of the meeting is to bring people together who share a mutual desire to have civil dialogue across differences. The Braver Angels is not trying to change anyone's belief. And there's a lot of misinformation out there that people on either ends of the poll think that that is their purpose. Their real purpose is to gain skills where we can disagree vehemently and passionately without treating the other person with contempt. The goal is to slow the forces that are pulling us apart and discover that perhaps we can work across divides on problems that both sides care about, because one thing we do care about is a love of the community and the country. We have a second folder flyer that we developed that states a little bit more of the purpose, and it is in the back of the room. If you felt bad, discouraged, frustrated, or even fearful about uncivil discords happening in our community, we hope you would come to this meeting. If you have an interest in participating in events or activities that could help us communicate across divides and maybe even find common ground, we hope you'd come to this meeting. Or if you just wanted to meet people who think differently than you do and get to know them as neighbors who share the same love of Woodland Park and Teller County, then we hope you'd come to this meeting. Woodland Park desperately needs to change how we handle differences, so we encourage anyone who believes in this goal to again join us on August twenty join us on Tuesday, August twenty ninth, six to seven PM at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading someone's comment on Zoom, trying to figure out what they were telling me.
You're looking real hard for a hand up.
No, I'm trying to see what they're telling me on Zoom. Annie Carter. And that's our final speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Yes, I'm Annie Carter. And years ago, if anyone was here that long ago, late eighties, I did the gardening, the landscaping under Sally Riley for the city. And, you know, since then, times have moved along. So I just had a few comments. It's summertime in the city above the clouds, Woodland Park, and like every year, we hope to see the medians and the street side flower beds and the storefront boxes and barrels ablaze with colorful flower displays. But this is another season of disappointment. The main drag along Highway twenty-four through town is a pathetic array of weeds, dead and dying trees, weeds, scarcely planted beds, more weeds, and very few businesses have invested in the welcoming show of care and color. Come on, folks. Where is your public pride of place? You want people, visitors and locals to shop the downtown venues, or at least be impressed when driving through, yet you allow the neglect to belie the quaint mountain town image you want to portray. If you value that image and want the reality, then shake loose a budget to plant vaunted annuals to fill in a basis of hardy perennials. Then maintain them with water and weeding. The Welcome to Woodland Area sign should be a riot of color, as should the Avenue of the Flags and Highway twenty-four sixty-seven and all along the business district. Until that time, hate to say it, but the place is an embarrassment. And I understand the problems of safety and all for the central median, but at some point, if the weeds could at least be cut or pulled, it's just unconscionable that there should be weeds there, the dead trees, you know, find a time where the traffic can happen. And then I kind of recommend there are some sturdy geotech material that can be laid down to prevent the weeds further growth. Large rock groupings possibly and low growing juniper and a few shrubs like hardy synchafylle. And these are low maintenance arrangements with year round interest doesn't just go blah in the wintertime. Could we add pride of place to our budgetary priority? We can't rely on the peak view alone. Thank you.
Thank you. It's one of councilmember cases and I is pet peeves.
Thank you.
Maybe at midnight, we'll get out there with our chainsaws.
Let's do it. We need to express that.
That's right. Safety first.
That's it for public comments this evening.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Do we have councilmember Nakai back?
We do.
Okay. Councilmember Nakai, can you hear us? And is your audio?
Annie, would you please leave your contact information with us here?
Yes, I can hear you, and I think my audio is working.
It is working. Good. Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, sorry, technical difficulties. It's too hot. It's too hot in Texas. The Wi-Fi doesn't like working.
And just remember, if I if you if you have something to say, just chime in so I so I realized a call on you because sometimes I forget you guys are on Zoom.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, past seven, past eight on a number nine, public hearing. We have nine A, consider ordinance fourteen fifty-six, and the presenter is senior planner CJ Gates. And remember, counsel, this is quasi judicial, so stay on topic.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Just getting my presentation up here. All right, thank you. As stated, this is a request for a two-year extension of the approved pines at Tamarack Planning Development Master Plan and a one-year extension of the preliminary plat. The subject property is located on the east side of Highway sixty-seven, north of intersection of sixty-seven and Sourdough Road across the highway from Shining Mountain Golf Course. The subject property is own planned unit development as seen on the right-hand side of the slide. Chapter seventeen point two zero point zero nine zero and eighteen point three zero point zero five zero outline the extension regulations for preliminary plats and PUD master plans. According to city codes, preliminary plats can be extended for one-year periods, and PUD master plans can be extended for two-year periods. On July eighteenth of two thousand and nineteen, the city council approved the Pines at Tamarack PUD final master plan and preliminary plat. The master plan consisted of twenty-six single-family lots on a twenty point six one acre lot. On May sixth to two thousand and twenty-one, city council approved a two-year extension of the Pines at Tamarack Master Plan to July eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And also a one-year extension of the preliminary plat to July eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. On August twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-two, the planning commission approved another one-year extension of the preliminary plat. So it would expire on July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, along with the PUD master plan. On May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, planning staff received a request from the applicant for a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack PUD master plan and a one-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack preliminary plat. Construction of this project is still anticipated, and no changes have been made to the original plans. Here on this slide is a snapshot of the approved master plan. Currently, the master plan consists of twenty-six dwelling units over twenty point six one acres for a density of one point two six dwelling units per acre. All units will be single-family residential and accessed off of three new newly created right-of-ways. The application met all noticing requirements and was referred to the parties listed here on the slide. Adjacent property owners within a hundred and fifty feet were also mailed a letter notifying them of the dismissal of the application as well as all meeting dates, including the scheduled planning commission and city council hearing. Staff has received no public comments regarding this extension proposal. Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District commented that they were in favor of the application. Core Electric also submitted a comment to planning staff via email on June sixteenth stating that they do not approve of the extension and will require a fifteen feet fifteen-foot front lot utility easement. Courseful's comment was included within your staff report. Staff would like to point out that the approved preliminary plat already does consist of a fifteen-foot utility easement on all typical local residential road sections. The planning commission heard this item on July thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three and unanimously recommended that the city council approve a request by David Garrison for a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Plan Unit Development Master Plan and a one-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Preliminary Plat for residential development on twenty point sixteen acres on lot two, block one of the Day Spring Fellowship in the Pines at Tamarack PUD Zone District. Staff findings is that staff believes that it's reasonable to extend the preliminary plat for an additional year as well as the PUD master plan for two years. By code, a preliminary plaque can only be extended for one year at a time, while PUDs can be extended for two years. Granting this extension would have the preliminary plat expire on July eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four, and the PUD master plan would expire on July eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Additionally, all conditions as originally approved will be extended and will still be in effect and apply. That concludes my presentation, and please let me know if you have any questions. We also have David Garrison, the applicant on Zoom tonight.
I have one question. CJ, I'm still unclear about Core's opposition in the beginning, and now you're saying that in fact, the project does comply with Core's new easement requirements.
Correct. Yeah, so Core did submit a comment saying that they do not approve because of the easements located on there already, but staff double-checked that, and there already are fifteen-foot utility easements with bordering all local roadways, so it will comply with their standards.
And has Core acknowledged that?
They have not.
Okay.
My comment my my comment follows on from that. Before you were here, there was some issue about a core and some of the other utilities wanting a larger easement from the city and the city not jumping at that. So is the idea with the easements, from what I understand, is they are no longer in the roadway. They're to the side of the roadway. Is that correct?
Um, in in past applications that I've been a part of, obviously, you guys know my tenure here is very short. But a lot of the times, the applicant will actually shrink that right-of-way width to extend that easement that, you know, Core and the other utility companies are requesting. And that's an option for them as well. I would like to point out, too, as well as when they do decide to develop this piece of property, it will still go through all the same channels and will get routed back to. it will still go through all the same channels and will get routed back to Core, Black Hills Energy and all the utility companies. So they will see this another time before it does get developed.
And it complies. It complied, the easement complies with.
Of course.
What, not with so much with their comment. This is probably prior to you coming here, there, there was a request. They wanted to expand their easements and it was, I'm going to say it was an arbitrary thing and the city wasn't necessarily agreeing that that, that they were going to require those sort of easements. Do you know what the status of that is and how this affects?
Well, if you go by the planning commission's write up, it says Core has changed their easement requirements to increase the size, excuse me, the new standard is fifteen feet, which this plat already meets. So I would hope that testimony to the planning commission is accurate.
I was going to say, I'm going to go ahead and let Karen speak and Kip speak and then Catherine, if you have a question, chime in after Karen and Kip.
That is correct, Mr. Neil. And that actually is an interesting piece of irony that Core's comment. It's already in place on the plat. So that's part of what's confusing is that the, the proposed preliminary plat contains a fifteen foot utility easement on adjacent to all those roads, which is exactly what they were asking for. So it's, it's really kind of a moot point at, at this time.
Well, thank you for saying it's confusing because I was listening to Robert, your comments and I'm agreeing, but I'm reading it and said, no, why are they complaining?
I think CJ and I first talked about this, I kind of gave him that same look. He said, what?
So a little history, yeah, a few years back, Core and Black Hills did not want to put their infrastructure within our designated right of way. So they wanted to put it outside of it. Our right of way was quite large. Then they wanted additional space on top of that. So the city shrunk the right of way. So they would then, the same width would almost be acceptable. So we weren't clear cutting a lot of the space we didn't.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So you're saying your right away, for example, was fifty feet and you, you shrunk it to thirty five or something? Is that kind of generally?
I don't know. I have the dimensions right off my head, Ben, like, but yeah.
Yeah, I think the intent behind that, asking for easement outside of that right of way is if you're in the right of way, you have to relocate utilities under the franchise agreement. If the road were to be redone or, you know, water and sewer had to be recompleted. So if you have a separate easement outside the right of way, then you're not bound by those same requirements to have to do that, which is I think where that request comes from. But what we've talked with them about is reducing it to the minimum required right of way that they would need for those two utilities within the, the gas and the electric to not encroach and encumber the, the properties more. So that's kind of a discussion we've had back and forth when these comments come in is making sure that what they're asking for meets the N E S C requirements for spacing those utilities.
And I suppose that decreasing that right of way hasn't impositioned our needs in a right of way. Do you follow what I'm saying? That, that we did that because we, we have plenty of room still for our needs in the right of way. We're not compromising ourselves. Correct?
Correct. It actually puts a burden on the property owner because before the city's water service lines would be, it'd be the city's responsibility from the main to the property line.
Right.
Right? Well, now the property line is the gas and electric do not cross the city's portion of that service line. It's on, they cross it on the homeowner's side. So they actually have to dig through the gas and the electric and they're at risk more than the city is at this point.
Makes sense. Thank you for answering. But the impact for this project is, is insignificant, but there, there will be projects where, for instance, driveways will be have, have to be shortened in order to accommodate the core utility right of way requirements now. Correct?
The driveway will still be the same length. It's just, will it be in the easement or not?
Okay, got it.
Councilmember Nakai.
So I have, don't have a question about this. I actually have a question, which I tried to get in before we all started this and it doesn't, I don't think it's a problem, but I am friends with the architect on this job. So I don't know if you guys want me to recuse myself from the vote. I don't think it's going to impact my vote, but it's totally up to you guys.
I don't, I don't think it's relevant.
I'm comfortable with you voting.
You feel you can, can be impartial?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Does he owe you any money or do you owe him any money?
That's a real rub.
No, no.
And Catherine, I, I am going to ask the, the owner of the property a question. So depending on what he answers, I think it'll be very benign, but you may want to read the right to change your mind.
Well, I don't know the owner of the property. I just know the architect. So, but yeah, you're fine.
So if the applicant has anything that he'd like to come up and, and have a conversation about, you're welcome to, or council, since you mentioned having questions, if the applicant wouldn't mind coming up to, or not coming up to the podium. He's on Zoom. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm just staring into space here. So.
So Dave, if you could unmute yourself and let everybody know you can hear us. Is Steve right CJ?
Yeah, his name, David Garrison.
Yep. Dave, can you hear us?
Dave, you're on mute.
We also have Jim Hook on attendees and he's a part of this project as well. So maybe Jim can speak. Eric?
Yep. He just. Dave is unmuted.
I think I just unmuted. Sorry.
You did. That's all right. We can hear you now.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry. Was there a specific question?
Go ahead. Councilmember Neil has a question for you.
Dave, it's a pretty simple question. It was asked at the planning commission. They asked for a status update as the property was put up for sale. But then it was taken off the market. Then you said there were some additional efforts that were keeping the project moving forward. You said there, or it was stated that there would be an update in six to eight months. I know that was only a month ago, but do you have a further update on your progress on the project?
Yes, we're continuing work on the project. You know, it's been delayed shortly after the, the first map was approved. You know, we ran into COVID and supply chain disruptions. Materials costs fluctuated dramatically. At one point I had decided I would liquidate the project. It actually was an escrow. We couldn't put the deal together. There, there was just too much choppy stuff going up on out there in the marketplace. And so I have decided to complete the project. So we're moving forward full steam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That, that's all I have.
Okay, council, any further questions for the applicant? Not seeing any further questions for you, Dave. Is there anything you would like to add?
No, I, I thank you for your attention to this and we look forward to being there sometime next year, building the project out.
Great. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Dave, one, one final question on that. So you'll be starting sometime next year. What's your ETA in terms of the build out?
I don't have an exact ETA. There's a lot of work still to be done. Tree removal, just to get it ready to start the dirt work in the undergrounds. And so I think the best answer to that is moving forward as expeditiously as we can.
That's a good answer, Dave.
That's good. Thank you.
All right, Suzanne, do you have anyone signed up for public comment on?
I do not.
Okay, seeing no public comment. Council, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen fifty six series twenty twenty three and ordinance furthering extending the pines at Tamarack Plan Unit Development Master Plan and Preliminary Plat.
I'll second it.
Okay, council, you may start to vote. You can just give me a verbal if you'd like.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion is passed unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, council. And we're off to item B and CJ is the presenter for that as well. And that's consider ordinance number fourteen fifty seven.
Madam Mayor, I will have to recuse myself from this one. I heard it when I was on planning commission.
Okay.
Just don't forget where I am.
Where are you going?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is CJ Gates with the City Woodland Park Planning. This application is to consider a plan unit development amendment to change the use from eating, drinking and eat in drive through to also allow for a car wash on Lot Four of the Walmart Center PUD. The subject property is located at Lot Four Walmart Woodland Park, Colorado and is zoned to PUD. Lot Four is located in the southern end of the, of Woodland Park, west of Highway twenty four and within the northern portion of the Walmart Planning and Development. The subject property is zone planned unit development as seen on the left hand side of the slide. On the right hand side of the slide, you will see the extent of the Walmart PUD. The subject property is located in the northern portion of the PUD, which is outlined in red. In two thousand and five, the Woodland Park City Council approved a request to rezone this property from agricultural to plain unit development. In two thousand and seven, city council approved the final, the final plat, which consisted of six lots and four tracks. The Walmart store has been built out on Lot One, while two through six were to be developed in the future with commercial uses. Within the narrative of the final development plan, it states that lots two through four are for general commercial use and have been depicted on the final development plan as financial institution with three drive through windows, eat, eating slash drinking place for eat in service and eating slash drinking place for drive in and through service. These lots can be interchanged as any of these for uses for compatible uses allowed by the Woodland Park Code. The maximum building heights for lots two through four is thirty five feet. The applicant submitted an application on December twenty first, two thousand twenty two, and the planning commission heard this request and recommended approval on February ninth of two thousand twenty three. The applicant then withdrew their application on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty three. The applicant submitted an identical application to the planning department on May third of two thousand twenty three. There is no difference between the December application to the current application. Due to the fact that the applicant withdrew their application, excuse me, they must, they started the process all over again and the application had to be routed back through the planning commission and ultimately to you all, the city council for a final determination. The table you see here comes from the final development plan narrative. As you see on this slide, outlined in red is Lot Four and the dimensional standards it has to meet per the PUD requirements. From this table, the applicant has proposed to change the building use for Lot Four as well as change the parking requirements in accordance with the proposed use. I would like to point out that within the application, the building height language was omitted. So the building height on thirty five feet will not be changing. On the current slide, you can see the proposed site plan, which is also attached within the application. The applicant is proposing an express style car wash that includes a three thousand five hundred and thirty nine square foot building that is twenty point four feet in height. The applicant is also proposing the entrance and exit to the site from the west side of the property. No new public streets are proposed and the location of the access to the proposed site is consistent with the approved PUD plan. In addition to this requested PUD amendment and as seen on the application, the applicant has also applied for a site plan review for the proposed car wash. The site plan review is a zoning development permit and is reviewed and approved administratively through the city of Woodland Park Planning Department. The planning commission or the city council is seeing this item tonight due to the PUD amendment portion of the application. Staff review chapter eighteen point three zero in accordance with this PUD amendment. These specific provisions include that the proposed, the proposal of the PUD district is to provide more flexibility and the application must be heard before the planning commission and city council, which we are doing tonight. Both of these provisions do comply. The uses allowed within this PUD were established at the time of the PUD was approved. This is a request to change the use from lot, of Lot Four from eating slash drinking place, eat in and drive through to also allow for a car wash. While the applicant has proposed updated narrative language for the PUD, the table on a previous slide will need to be updated to reflect this change. The development must meet all development standards and this item may comply. The dimensional standards proposed for the new use meet every requirement except for the parking standards on the PUD. The applicant is proposing to meet the city's established parking requirements in the code. The proposed car wash will include twenty three stacking states, stacking spaces, ten vacuum stalls and three employee stalls. Off street parking requirements for residential uses, this is not applicable since no residential use is being proposed on the site. Off street parking requirements for non residential uses, this does comply. The applicant is proposing to meet the city's established parking requirements per municipal code section eighteen point three nine. The proposed car wash as stated will have twenty three stacking states, spaces and ten vacuum stalls and three, three employee stalls. Landscaping shall meet the city code and provision and this may comply. The applicant included a detailed landscaping plan within the application. Staff included a red line, the red line comments within the landscape plan. And this provision may comply if the applicant is consistent with the Woodland Park Municipal Code and the current approved PUD. A detailed compliance check will occur within the administrative review of the proposed site plan. Staff also reviewed section eighteen point three four of the city code when, when reviewing this application. That full analysis was within your staff report and is very redundant to the criteria we just reviewed. In accordance with the condition or with the PUD amendment and site plan review, the applicant is, is required to submit a preliminary site plan along with other preliminary documents. As far as process goes, staff makes comments on the preliminary documents during this process and it will get resolved when the applicant submits for their final site plan, which stated is an administrative process. The applicant, the application was referred to the city and outside of referral agencies on the slide. The Colorado Department of Transportation submitted a comment on the proposed PUD amendment, which was attached within your staff report. Within CDOT's letter, they did state that no access permit was required at this time. During the planning commission hearing, a citizen submitted a letter that was also included, included within your step, within the staff report. The planning commission heard this item on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty three and recommended that the city council approve a PUD amendment to change the use from eating slash drinking place, eat in and drive through to also allow for a car wash on Lot Four of the Walmart Center and amend building and parking data with, with the following conditions. A final updated site plan resolving all issues identified on the red line plans must be approved by the city before any zoning development permit will be issued. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the application, the applicant shall submit for and receive approval of a final site plan for permitted use, including landscaping, drainage, architectural elevations, access, et cetera. Infrastructure zoning development permit, ZDPs and building permits for all new construction, including all civil construction drawings, final drainage report, final landscape plan, final site plan, final floor plans and elevations, final grading, sediment and erosion control with BMPs, final utility plan, final photometric plan and Colorado stormwater permit and stormwater management plan. Three, an amended page one of the PUD plan of the development must be submitted with an updated building and parking data table to reflect the change in use in parking for Lot Four. The private access drive labeled on the site plan must be updated for consistency with the recorded subdivision plat. Five, the applicant shall amend the proposed building facade to better harmonize with the Woodland Park Mountain Western aesthetic. And lastly, number six, the applicant shall provide fencing sustainably, the same as the fencing requirements within section eighteen point four two. within Section eighteen-point-four-two-point-zero-seven-zero of the Woodland Park Municipal Code as it were to apply to the subject parcel. This item number six is in red because staff is requesting that condition number six on this slide not be included with ordinance number fourteen fifty-seven. This condition was added to the list of conditions approved by the Planning Commission during the July thirteenth here. Here on this slide, you will see a snapshot of the proposed site plan. I would like to call out on this, on this site, there is a utility easement that currently exists on the property. Within our municipal code, Section eighteen-point-four-two-point-one-one-zero, it states that fences shall not be permitted within a utility and drainage easement. The yellow box that you see on the slide is a rough outline of the utility easement that exists on both sides of the property line, which is outlined in blue. The red line you see at the top of your screen is a wood fence that is already existing on the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park parcel. Due to the size of the easement, there is not enough room on the subject property to erect a fence. For further background, this is a street view looking east towards Highway twenty-four of the Mobile Home Park fence that is currently existing. Staff recommendation is to remove condition number six on ordinance number fourteen fifty-seven, and that City Council moved to approve ordinance number fourteen fifty-seven, Series two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council for the City of Woodland Park, Colorado, approving the modification of the allowed use of Lot Four of the Walmart PUD from eating slash drinking place, eat-in and drive-through to also allow a car wash, which includes the conditions of approval, numbers one through five, and deleting condition number six. This concludes my presentation, council. I'm available for any questions, and we also have the applicant in attendance tonight and some other folks on Zoom. If you guys have any questions for them.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for CJ while he's present? We want to start with CJ, and then we can have the applicant come up and then, because I know you guys have also have questions for staff as well.
I don't have any questions for CJ.
Okay. Robert?
CJ, um. Water usage. On page, just for you guys' reference, the first one I want to go to was page one oh seven in our packet, and the second place I'll go is page one fifteen. So on page one oh seven. Is this within the staff report, council member? This is within our packet, so this is from, yes, it's from your comply, may comply, so it's E. Proposed development shall be designed, constructed, maintained with adequate water supply, waste disposal, solid waste disposal, and air quality protection methods. You with me? Yeah. So it says the applicant sent an email to staff on May eleventh in response to the request by staff asking the applicant to outline their specific water usage. According to the applicant, the proposed car wash has estimated they will use ninety-five-point-two-five gallons of water per car. Boy, nothing for a little gallon bucket and a hose, huh? Of the ninety-five-point-two-five gallons, twenty gallons of fresh water, seventy-five-point-two-five gallons of recycled water. They also estimate that around sixty-three-point-five gallons will be recycled per wash, and approximately eleven-point-four-seven gallons are discharged into the wastewater sewer system. Last of the applicant is expecting to wash around two hundred and forty cars per day at peak weekend traffic days. So that's, that's what your report says, and then on, I got a couple of questions about this on page one hundred and fifteen. It says. Water, and then now I'm on Commissioner's comments. This was before the Planning Commission. So it says water usage and tap size will be reviewed and commented on by utilities in this site plan review and planning zone permit process for water usage. If the recycling system shuts down, the car wash continues to operate using only, using only one hundred percent fresh water. The Utilities Director did not request the amount of water per car wash with with or without recycling system, numbered of car washes per day, maintenance and response time of the recycled water system. The conditions of approval require this information. Mr. Hawkins added that the car washer uses ninety-five-point-two-five gallons of fresh water per vehicle if the recycling system is not working. So my question is, citizens of Woodland Park are under water restrictions right now and can't water their gardens or unless it's on a specific day. When I crunch the numbers on this at the rates that are stated in here, the car wash at this at two hundred and forty vehicles a day is about one-point-seven-five million gallons of water. If their recycling system fails, that number jumps to eight-point-three million gallons of water. What is the city looking to require that operation must have the recycling system working? And if it doesn't, is there any requirement that it shut down? Because that's a huge use of city resources.
Kip answered that one before he does come up. Excuse me, I know that the applicant does have some concrete information on proposed water usage as well that may help.
Good question. That's the tough part with commercial development, how it will develop, how it won't as we move forward. My numbers are a little different just because I got refined numbers since then. So no disrespect to what's in your packet, but I just received some numbers. Basically, it all depends on how many people use this car wash, right? That's what this all hinges on. We've had two car washes in town.
Three.
Previous years, and we've done just fine providing water for that. How will their business plan or model increase that volume? I don't know. You know, they sell memberships, things like that. I can just go off of numbers that I have currently from other car washes and the data they give me, so. I look at it strictly from what was going to be there and what the potential use was to what is going there now, so. It's really, it's really difficult, so. I don't have anything in place that says if their recycle system goes down, they can't wash cars. I don't think that's my place in in the business world either. We can either serve it or we can't. I believe we can serve this with the water we have available.
Given our water restrictions, you're still okay with that?
Yes. So my number is basically what I was given, three hundred and twenty-seven cars per day. If that's accurate, at ninety-five gallons per wash, that's just about a million gallons a month. If you do the recycling system and they only use thirty gallons per car, that's about three hundred thousand gallons per month. Existing car wash you today in town uses anywhere from sixty thousand to two hundred and fifteen thousand. So I would imagine that if there's another car wash, it'll probably lessen the load off existing car washes. That volume will go down, and maybe they balance out, I don't know, but I can't imagine everyone's going to be using the same car wash. But it's a bound, it's a balancing act, for sure. That's if three hundred and twenty-seven cars per day use it. There is another estimate on there, about one hundred and thirty-one cars per day, and those numbers are significantly less. So it's all about who uses it, how many people that drive through our town that want to use the car wash.
And then my last question to staff on this is, it looks like eleven and a half gallons, more or less, go into our wastewater. What's the quality of that? What's chemical content of that? And is that going to have adverse effect on our wastewater plant?
We currently treat the other car washes and the waste from those, and it isn't a problem. It will increase the volume to the south side. Woodland Village Mobile Home Park Lift Station, two and a half times. Currently, those pumps run about two hours a day. It'll increase it to almost five hours a day. So still within the capacity of the the plant, depending on timing. There's always those challenges. You can't tell when people are going to wash their cars or when the other lift stations are going to pump or not pump, but we do have redundancy systems in place to handle that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Neil?
I'm gonna wait till the applicant comes to speak or starts to speak.
Councilmember Connors?
Councilmember Zulu Wagga asked my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Case? Councilmember Nakai?
Yeah, Robert hit, hit, Robert hit on one of my questions, so we're good.
Okay, Kip, I just had a question of, how does the car wash business compare to our other commercial businesses in the sense of water use?
I assume you're referring to like restaurants, fast food?
Sure.
Walmart?
Right, well, for the the intended use was drive-through restaurants, dining, eat-in, so, yeah.
So it's it's similar usage between like a dine-in and fast food, ironically. So they use anywhere between twenty-five thousand gallons a month and fifty-two thousand gallons a month.
Okay, thanks. Okay?
I guess I have one other question. I don't know if it's for you, Kip, or for CJ. This whole hearing is about changing the zoning of it, right? So what's the impact to planning development in the city of the commercial properties to make this type of zoning change use from a from a restaurant to a to a car wash?
The the biggest thing with this app, specific applications, not really changing the zoning, the zone district itself as planning and development will not change. It's changing to allow for a car wash to be constructed on the site within the PUD. For some reason, the applicant decides not to build, someone else could come along and still build a drive-through restaurant. It's just also allowed to have a car wash if, you know, if you all approve this ordinance.
Okay, council, do you want to go ahead and let's have the applicant come on up? And he can address any questions you may have, and he can give us his introduction.
Appreciate, excuse me, appreciate y'all having to have me here today. My name is Tess Hawkins with Baseline Engineering. I'm representing Seven B Building and Development as well as Champion Express Car Wash. Also on the call is Alan Kershoff, Steve Nelson with Seven B Building and Development, and Michael Murray with Champion Express Car Wash. And then CJ can move to the next slide. So the things I want to address today is the purpose, reiterate the purpose of the PUD amendment and what we're trying to accomplish with the decision tonight. I do want to address the trip generation of the car wash as well as the water use, the conditions of approval. We are, we're okay with conditions of approval, so I won't have a slide on that. No, I no longer have a slide on that. Next slide, CJ. All right, so the purpose of the PUD amendment, the standards that apply to a new PUD also apply to a PUD amendment. But the standards of significance that I want to point out and the purpose of this PUD amendment, the reason why we're here tonight is flexibility. So the purpose of a PUD is to provide flexibility in the town zoning code and allow land uses. The allowing the car wash or the option of a car wash or eating and drinking place does reiterate that standard of allowing flexibility within the within the town's municipal code. The next standard of significance is overall compatibility, which addresses access, building height, and size, landscape area, pavement area, and building setbacks, and I'll talk a little more about that in the later slide. The third standard of significance is permitted uses is the, which also ties back to overall compatibility, is the car wash is a permitted use appropriate for this location. And a little more on that note, again, this is own PUD. The property to the north of the Mobile Home Park is located, is zoned, service commercial, which allows a car wash as a use by right, and these two property share a share a property boundary. The zone districts to the east allow a car wash under a conditional use. The zone district to the south is, of course, still a PUD, and it's the Walmart. Walmart building, and the zone districts to the south is unincorporated telecounting. In the image below, this is the amendment to the table that we are proposing. I still think it needs some tweaks. We're going to work with staff on that. It proposes Lot Four A as the eating and a drink eating slash drinking place and drive-through restaurant. Lot Four B would be the car wash, which is showing two different options. So as CJ stated earlier, if we got through the site development plan and we were not able to work out the comments with staff, and the car wash did not, was not developed here, you can still develop a eating and drinking restaurant here. So talking about the use comparison and the compatibility of the existing uses and what's already allowed, looking at the comparison of the two uses, what's allowed, what's already allowed and what we are proposing. The QSR is proposing a four-thousand-square-foot building. The car wash is three thirty-five-hundred square feet. Our proposed paving paved area is forty-one-point-two percent of the site. The QSR was thirty-nine-point-two percent of the site. Our proposed open space or landscaping area is thirty-five percent, thirty-five-point-six percent in comparison to the QSR that is thirty-seven-point-three-one percent. The height of a building, our building is twenty-four feet. The maximum height for the QSR is thirty-five feet. And then looking at the trip generation, the QSR is projected to generate three hundred and ninety-three vehicles per day. The car wash is projected to generate three hundred and thirty-one vehicles per day. Okay, looking a little closer into trip generation. So the two hundred and seventy number that was provided in the original application or two hundred and forty, it was two hundred and forty-two hundred and seventy vehicles per day is a general number that Champion Express uses as an average across all their sites in this type of location. However, looking at the trip generation ma- manual, the IT trip generation manual, which is the standard for gathering general traffic generation numbers for any use, which is accepted by CDOT and all municipalities within Colorado. So our specific gen- trip generation numbers from the IT manual, well, first, let me take a step back. The IT trip generation manual takes a conservative approach, and the calculations that they provide in their manual are generally worst-case scenario. So the numbers that we are providing for our trip generation were modeled from car washes along the East Coast in New Jersey, New York, and Washington, DC. So looking at the vehicles generated by the car wash per hour, the IT manual only provides peak hour traffic. So the numbers that we modeled are based on the Saturday and Monday through Friday peak hour, which is four to six PM. So every hour of the day that we've calculated is based on the worst-case scenario for a car wash. So Saturday through Sunday, we are looking to generate twenty-two vehicles per hour. And then Monday through Friday, it would be eight vehicles per hour. And then looking at vehicles per day, Sunday through Saturday, we are looking at two hundred and thirty-seven vehicles per day. That's only for Saturday and Sunday, and then Monday through Friday, it would be eighty-eight vehicles per day. Next slide. So the numbers that were presented in the previous slide use a pass-by reduction rate. So the IT manual for automobile-oriented uses allows those uses to reduce their trip generation numbers and their calculations by sixty percent, which is called a pass-by reduction. And the definition of the pass-by reduction essentially is, it is assumed that six percent, six percent of the numbers that they have calculated are pass-by trips, and a pass-by trip is when someone is passing by a land use and they happen to stop there. They don't have any intent originally to a stop to stop at that use. So a quick example, if you are on your way to work and you decide, oh, I I I could use a bite to eat, I'll stop by McDonald's. That's a pass-by trip. You did not have any intent. You did not have any intent to stop at that establishment. And that is applicable to drive-through restaurants, car washes, other automobile oriented uses such as gas stations as well. So we were able to pull numbers from existing Champion Express car wash sites. Some of these sites today have been sold and are operated under a different name. One of those sites is located in Albuquerque, New Mexico. The actual vehicle counts, average vehicle counts, annual average, annual vehicle counts are three hundred and sixty-nine vehicles per day. That is with a hundred and sixty-foot car wash tunnel length. The car wash tunnel that we're proposing is a hundred, hundred feet in length. The popula- population of Albuquerque, New Mexico is five hundred and sixty-two thousand people, and that was taken in twenty-twenty-one. The Three Mountain Radius population is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand people. Now, if we do not use the pass-by reduction to calculate the estimated trips for the Willen Park Car Wash, Willen Park Car Wash, it estimates that we will generate three hundred and twenty-seven vehicles per day. Again, those numbers are taken from car washes that are established on the East Coast, New York, Washington DC and New Jersey. And if we use those numbers at three hundred and twenty-seven vehicles per day, that would match, almost match the numbers of the trip generation numbers of the Albuquerque, New Mexico site, which is seventy times, that city is seventy times larger than Willen Park. Population of Willen Park is what we had in some sensitive data in twenty-twenty-one is seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-three. Talked to Kip and said it's kind of pushed over to the eight thousand since then. So with that comparison, we felt it was appropriate to use the pass-by reduction, trip, trip reduction to put the Willen Park proposed car wash at a hundred and thirty-one vehicles per day. The other site in the second row shown on the screen is in Lafayette, Louisiana, which has a population of a hundred and twenty-one thousand people, and that car wash tunnel is also a hundred and sixty feet in length. This is also existing location and it generates two hundred and ninety-four vehicles per day. All right, so something that came up in the meeting with the planning commissioners was our, the capability of our equipments. At that time, of the equipment, at that time, we did not have an answer, I did not have an answer for that. In the application and narrative, we did use a general average of two minutes per car, meaning that each car spends about two minutes within the tunnel before it's finished and moves on top of the vacuum stations or out of the car wash property. So to refine that a little bit more, each car spends actually about one minute to two minutes in the car wash tunnel. And for Champion Express, that timeframe is the timeframe that required to achieve the quality of service. If you go around to some of their sites, if that is shorter than that, then you do not receive the quality of wash that they think is, is appropriate to meet their customers' needs. So with that one to two minutes per vehicle, the car wash can process up from thirty to sixty vehicles per hour. Going back to the trip generation number, it's though we can process thirty-sixty vehicles per hour, the population of Willen Park does not warrant that type of trip generation for us to do that. So the car wash's maximum capability, essentially how fast can a conveyor belt move? It's thirty seconds per vehicle, which essentially brings you up to a hundred vehicles per hour is what you, what the car wash can actually process. Again, this is the same equipment that is used in the hundred and sixty-foot car wash tunnels in larger markets. So based on the IT trip generation manual, using the pass-by reduction, twenty-two vehicles per hour is what we're anticipating for this car wash. Without that pass-by reduction, it would be fifty-three vehicles per hour. And this is important because in the planning commission hearing, the issue of stacking, car stacking into the streets being an issue came up and with the worst-case scenario of the car wash producing fifty-three vehicles per hour, but being able to process sixty vehicles per hour, it is not anticipated that the, there would be overflow stacking into the street. So continuing on the point of the stacking spaces, we do have twenty-three stacking spaces on the side that includes the actual drive-out stacking spaces as well as one car being in the tunnel. Again, to reiterate, reiterate, the car wash on average can can move thirty to sixty vehicles per hour. If we're producing twenty-two vehicles per hour, which is the estimate from the trip generation manual, deductively, deductively, we can assume that no cars will stack, even if we go up to the fifty-three vehicles per hour, deductively, no cars will stack into the driveway, outside of the driveway and outside of the property lines. So again, just to look at the trip generation comparison, the car wash with our estimates with the pass-by reduction is a hundred and thirty-one vehicles per day. Our proposed hours operations are eleven hours a day, that is seven AM to eight PM, eight AM to seven PM. With the drive-through QSR, those tend to operate, per the IT manual, operate fourteen, twenty-four hours a day, generating up to three hundred and ninety-three vehicles per day with the pass-by reduction. All right, so looking at water use and discharge data. Again, I have the Albuquerque, New Mexico site up here, which Champion Express has actual data from, including water bills, which we can provide if it's, if it's requested. The Albuquerque, New Mexico site uses a first-generation reclamation system. And with generating three hundred and twenty-one vehicles per day, the average annual freshwater use for each car is twenty-five gallons per car. That is a seventy-five, seventy-four percent efficiency rate over a seven-month average. And then the number, the ninety-five gallons, that is essentially an industry standard for how much it takes, how many gallons it takes to wash a car. It's an old standard, but the efficiency numbers that you see posted here are based off that industry standard. Old industry standard. So with the proposed reclamation system that is going to be implemented at the Willen Park site, the average annual discharge is one million twenty-five thousand, let's call it one minute twenty-six thousand gallons in a year. And then in that same row, you'll see that's based on a seven-month average. The reason that is there is because these reclamation systems do have to be maintained. And at this Albuquerque site, the operators were failing to maintain that. So we took the average of seventy-four percent as if it was maintained. However, if we look at the line down, that state, that shows the efficiencies when it's not being maintained. There's a sixty-six percent average over a twelve-month average. So if the Willen Park reclamation system were to operate completely unmaintained, it would produce or use approximately two thousand, two million three hundred and fifty thousand gallons per year. So in the numbers that we're calculating, which we're going to provide to staff in our next submitted site plans middle, we're going to assume the worst-case scenario, being that the Willen Park site will operate at sixty-nine percent efficiency rate with the seventy-four percent efficiency rate being averaged for the first seven months. And if the system is unmaintained for the remainder of its operation, that would average out to sixty-nine percent. Putting it at twenty-nine point eight-five gallons per car, call it thirty gallons per car, using two million three hundred and fifty thousand gallons per year. If we use the pass-by reduction with the system being unmaintained, it's estimated that that usage will be down to nine hundred and forty-four thousand gallons per year. And that's with a hundred and thirty-one vehicles per day. Three hundred, with three hundred and twenty-seven vehicles per day, that would be up to two million gallons per year if the system goes unmaintained. However, because we did get these comments, it caused Champion Express to take a closer look at their water use. And that's where we, they came upon the realization in the last few months that the Albuquerque, New Mexico site was being poorly maintained, their reclaim system. So now with new sites, they are pulling their water meters inside of the building so they can monitor them more closely and see where inefficiencies are happening. In our first middle, the water meter is located outside of the building. And then the next middle, the water meter will be located inside the building to better take a look at water use and efficiency, efficiency with the reclaim system.
Can I, excuse me, can I pause you right there? Can we go back a slide and click at your name again, please?
Yes, Tess, T-E-Z, Tess.
Tess?
Yes.
Okay. Has, this is a lot of information that we're seeing for the first time and trying to digest. Robert, I liked your questions. Kip and CJ, have you seen these new numbers or these numbers before?
I received these numbers Tuesday night.
Say that again.
I received new numbers Tuesday night.
Have you had a chance to review these numbers prior to night?
I've used the three hundred and twenty-seven vehicles per day and as well as the one thirty-one vehicles per day. And then with the recycling rates, those are the numbers I gave council members of the WADA.
Okay. And your staff report then, recommendation remains the same, correct? Based on seeing these numbers and relooking them?
Yes, it, obviously with the recycle system in use, it's a lot more manageable than with it not in use.
Thank you.
I have just one question before you go on. What does unmaintained mean in this chart?
I may have to defer to one of the Champion Express or 7B folks, but I believe that system needs to be cleaned out on a regular basis to operate efficiently.
So it sounds like that's not happening, and these are the results with that condition.
Yep, that first line is the results when it's operating efficiency, that's second line, it's when that maintenance is not happening regularly.
I understand now, thank you for clarifying that and sorry to interrupt you.
You're okay.
And I have a follow-up question on, on that same point. So from, from a city standpoint, my concern is that you would be required to maintain your recycling. From a business standpoint, what's the pros and cons of why you would leave it unmaintained?
That costs more money to the, to Champion Express. And it wasn't realized until this year, until these questions started being brought up. And they started looking at their water bills to provide these numbers at this hearing. And that's when they found out they were losing money by essentially paying for more water.
So the trade-off then is either maintain them and pay less of a water bill versus leave them unmaintained and pay more on water. So you pay more on maintaining, less on water versus more on water and less just with staff not touching.
I think the question is that it costs more to maintain it than it is to pay, pay the water bill, is that, was that the question?
Yeah, what did you find out?
Alan or Steve, can you answer that question for me?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, this is Alan Kershaw. I'm with 7B Building and Development. The project manager on the project for 7B Building and Development and Champion Express. And so I can answer that question, I'd like to step back a little bit on water usage. So as we've been going through this process in several other Colorado locations, and I'll just bring up Windsor. That's who we recently just permitted through. The city asked us to go back and look at some of our sites and provide invoices for those locations that showed water usage, it showed car counts and it showed, you know, the utility bills. And so when we were doing that and gathering that information, we were putting it to an Excel sheet and when we started looking at it, we started noticing the efficiencies had gone down in a few months. And so we looked into that further, right, for operational site. And what we found is that if we're not paying attention on the water bills and actually calculating the usage each month, it's hard to detect if that system or that, that reclaim system is not as efficient as it should be. And since then, that's what this is talking about, we have incorporated within our operations to actually be watching it on a daily basis, calculating it and, and then understanding when that efficiency is going down. To your question, efficiency, water usage is extremely important to us as a company as well. Obviously, water usage is the biggest cost in the car wash, one of the biggest costs. And so it's important for us to manage that and to keep that down as best we can. It's, it's a business decision, right? And so as we are working through operations, as we are fine-tuning, as we're growing, as we're doing those things, those are the refinements that we're doing in our systems as well. On our reclaim systems, we'd like to say we're using some of the best reclaim systems in the industry. And it's important to us on that as well. And so we're always looking at new technologies. One last thing I would like to bring up, if you, if you see that slide, there's a, there's a, there's another site located in there. It's called our Vernal site, that we actually did the same thing, we looked at the invoices, those kind of things. What's, what I want to bring up about that is, is not only does a reclaim provide efficiencies for water usage, but the actual systems itself, the car wash systems themselves that are designed, and we use Sunny's as, as a system provider, they're always fine-tuning those systems to make them more water efficient. And so that Vernal site actually doesn't even have a reclaim system in it. And you can see the water usage on that, even with the system, the efficiencies on that, it's only using fifty-three gallons per car compared to what the industry standard would say, you're going to use ninety-five gallons as a baseline. So that's just what we're trying to show you there is, not only do we have efficiencies in our system, but we have the reclaim. Back to the maintenance question, just one last thing on that. The reclaim system's not going to go down, we do, we do do system maintenance for the whole car wash. So it'd be like fine-tuning the systems, so that's done on a regular basis. And, and I can't speak to this a one hundred percent, but in those scenarios, they may close that, that car wash down for the data to fine-tune the whole system. And that's how they maintain their car washes. I hope that helps and doesn't muddy the waters for you.
Yeah, Tess, just, I want to make sure I fully understand all the terminology. The pass-by reduction. One more time, what is the pass-by reduction?
So the pass-by reduction is tied to automobile-oriented uses, gas stations, drive-through restaurants, car washes. And that assumes that sixty percent of the trips that the IT manual has calculated, which is a conservative approach, can be reduced based, because sixty percent of those numbers have been, their numbers have been exacerbated to assume the worst-case scenario. So they give you the leniency to reduce that by sixty percent, assuming that sixty percent of those numbers are folks just passing by and choosing to stop there because they have the extra time. That makes sense. So if you're driving to pass the car wash, or if you're going to Walmart and you tell yourself, I have an extra twenty minutes here, oh, shoot, there's the car wash, I'll stop there. That, it's, that's the pass-by, you're passing by and you stop there, you did not have any intention to go there. So the numbers that are generated that they are assuming, it could be a give or take that you will actually produce those numbers based on how many people actually choose to pass by the car wash and use it rather than having an intention to use it.
Okay. With that explanation, here's my, the question I really have. And this is probably for Alan or Steve, whomever is your business model representative. Because I too am concerned about, you know, the amount of water. This car wash would be a fourth car wash. We have two self-serve and one automated in town. You're adding a second automated. So it would really be competing possibly with the human being, I don't think of any. Oh, there, there are three self-service, I just remembered the third one. Probably not drawing very much off. Um, probably not drawing very much off of the self-service because they're not like car washes, but the human being would be your competitor. When you did your business model, what percentage did you think you would be pulling off of? So that this is not a, a real additive and it's to your point, Kip, that you add a car wash, well, some of them are going to go over there instead of make, at the only one there is in town. So what was your business model calculation? What is, what are you pulling off? And what is going to be an additive amount to the city?
Uh, that is a good question. I, I will have Alan take that question, but CJ and I were joking that, uh, part of our degrees should study social behavior, uh, to understand that. Uh, but I will take, have Alan take that question.
All right, so, um, I'm going to see if I'm understanding the question, um, when we do our business model. So when we look at a site, um, there's some components that we're looking at. We're actually looking at uh, vehicles per day that are driving by the potential site that we're interested in. And we're looking for a certain amount of vehicles per day that are driving along that site that we can draw from. Um, and so that's one of the demographics that we look at. We look at demographics from the point of distance from the car wash. So, um, how much of that population is, and what distances it is, is away from the, the car wash? So we're looking at those factors. Um, the third thing that we look at is when we build our car washes, we look at a regional, uh, a regional approach. And what I mean by that is since we are membership driven, um, we're looking to build out a regional presence. So Colorado Springs, for example, Woodland Park, uh, you know, Pueblo, Fall, uh, Fountain, Colorado. And so what happens is if they have a membership with Champion Express, then if they're in any one of those areas and they're passing by and they, as Tez is talking about, and they say, oh, I need to wash my car, they can actually go to a Champion Express. So it's part of the whole, um, it's part of the whole thing that we look at when we're trying to make a decision on where we're going. And, and Woodland Park has the demographics, has the drive-by car count that we're looking for on twenty-four. And it's, it's part of our regional plan, so it's an important, it's an important site to us.
Okay, so you actually never stood outside the human being and for a month got a count? Because it's the only one in town on, and it's on twenty-four. It's going to be right next to twenty-four where you're going to be putting. So you could get a pretty, and, and there's very seldom if ever a line at the human being car wash. You could get an almost exact number count of what pulls into a car wash with the assumption that your membership might tick it up a little bit more because somebody that has a membership could see yours and say, oh, let me jump into that one instead of a non-member. So have you ever actually surveyed what is stopping at our one and only automated car wash?
You know, I can't speak to that part because I'm not part of the real estate team when they're looking into the due diligence. Um, but we do do this, you know, in different regions around the country. Um, where there's, like I mentioned, there are certain demographics that we're looking at. There's certain things that we're looking for. Um, Woodland Park has it. It, as far as what we project, we project two hundred and fifty cars a day. That's what we're projecting for this site. It's a small market. We identify our markets, you know, small, medium, large. Um, this is a small market for us and we project two hundred and fifty cars a day. And, and what we do differentiate ourselves is, is quality. So if I go look at, I mean, I, if I go and sit there and stand at that car wash in Woodland Park and just count the cars, that's not taking, that's not taking into account what we do as a car wash company and how we do a car wash and what we do for our members and how, what, how important are the quality of our car washes. I'm not saying that, that that person doesn't have that same thing, but we believe the way we do it, we do it better. And so from that, we, we realize that we're going to, or we think, we project that we're going to get more memberships through that. And, and, and once again, like I said, on the regional play, when you're in many places, then people have the convenience of going to that same car wash regardless of where they're at in the region.
Thank, thank you very much. And I'm sorry to slow it down, but I did have these questions. I've gotten enough information. I think I know where I'm, I'm going.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Nakai?
Yeah, no one's really touched on the, um, traffic issue in that site. Because I go, you know, as you all know, my favorite place over there is Starbucks. And it's already bad enough in the summer trying to get in and out of that parking lot with the Walmart traffic. If this is going to back up the road going into the mobile home park is going to back up onto that road. So, you know, I'm just, I'm not real keen on the whole throwing two hundred and fifty cars in there because they're not all at one time I get, but that's still fair amount of cars on a weekend. Um, and that's, that's my concern, along with the water. I mean, the water is a big concern for me just looking forward. I realize we have water today, but water's not producing like it used to, so.
Mayor, I don't.
Those are my comments.
His presentation, we interrupted him. I'm so sorry.
Sure.
I did have one more slide.
I do apologize.
Lost a string.
Yeah, I did. Um, oh yeah, so Alan did mention that two hundred and two hundred and fifty cars per day. That's their average. That's what they were projecting. Uh, however, uh, staff won't accept just what you think you're going to produce. Uh, you need those numbers to come from a, 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 uh, state, our thirty source, which is the I T E manual. That's why we used that. That's the one, where the one thirty-one comes from. And then the, without the pass by reduction, that's where the three twenty-seven comes from. Um, if you do a middle ground average.
Exactly.
Okay, I can go back up one slide, CJ. If you do that middle ground average, um, to that two forty, two fifty that Alan mentioned, you can kind of model that off the Vernal City, Utah site and look at the water use of that, that annual water use, um, to kind of get an idea of how many gallons, uh, per year will be used. But again, that does not have a, a reclaim system attached to it, so it's not recycling any water. Um, all right, now last slide. I'm, I'm good. Uh, so in the planning commission hearing, noise impacts, um, arose, uh, to the existing, uh, residents to the north of the car wash property, or proposed car wash property. Uh, and Champion Express does have data on that equipment, uh, as far as what type of noise emissions it will produce. Uh, the vacuum motors, uh, which is the, um, which are contained within a, uh, C M U wall enclosure, uh, those at, uh, ninety-four point two feet, uh, will have a, uh, decimal reading of forty-eight, forty-eight decibels. Uh, the vacuum nozzles at ninety-six feet will have a reading of forty-six decibels. Uh, and the lower fans at a hundred and fifteen feet, uh, will have a, uh, decimal reading of fifty-three decibels. Uh, the distance, the distance, um, from the nearest home, uh, mobile home that is located north of the site um, is ninety-four feet, ninety-six feet and a hundred and fifteen feet, uh, from each respective, uh, uh, component or equipment of the car wash. Through C dot noise studies, uh, you will see the quote to the right that states zero decibels is the threshold of human hearing, forty to fifty decibels is a normal, it is normal for a peaceful neighborhood. Seven to eighty decibels is a level adjacent to a busy urban street or fifty feet from a major freeway. And a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty decibel is the typical of which sound is painful. Uh, and then going back to the chart to the right, uh, you can see, uh, the nearest home, uh, will experience a, um, at, at the highest, a fifty-three decibel reading. Um, and that noise reading comes from the lower fans, which is the loudest piece of equipment from the car wash. Um, one thing to note is that that reading, um, the calculation, the calculation of the decimal reading is based on, um, readings that were taken from directly in front of the exit of the car wash. Now, the exit, exit of car wash does not face the mobile home park. It actually faces away from it. Um, so that reading would actually be much lower, uh, than what's shown on the screen. That's the end of my presentation.
Very good. Council, any further questions?
Mayor, um, I know that we're here to look at this in terms of the P U D and whether we can make those changes. Um, what, listening to all of this information has brought up for me is, I'm not so much opposed to that, but I'm certainly concerned about the, uh, recycling of water and that usage and the fact that we don't have anything in place currently as a city for that. So is there, uh, just logistically, and it's perhaps an attorney question, is there a way that that can be, uh, a provisional, uh, requirement in, i- if we do proceed with this, whether there is further work that can be done with our, uh, with our planning department in terms of a requirement that ensures that we, uh, guard our water supply?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question before I answer it. Are you asking if we can add a further condition or if you as the council can add a further condition to the approval that a water, um, I don't know that it's a water study, but some sort of water provisions be in place prior to construction?
Yeah, like they must be operating during hours where the reclamation system is functional.
Say that again?
The, the car wash can only operate when the reclamation portion of their system is operational. Is that what you're trying to get at?
Well, what I heard the, uh, is it Alan say was that?
Alan did have his hand up to speak. I don't know if he wants to say something.
All right, well, let me finish the thought on that and then that's, what I thought I heard him say was that, um, it's a maintenance process that they may do or may not do, and they monitor it in terms of their water usage, but they don't necessarily do it as a part of their protocols. And I'm wanting to know whether it can be something that we further look at with the planning department, that it be part of the protocol um, to guard our water supply.
Alan has his hand up again. Let's go ahead, let Alan.
Thank you. I, I, I'm sorry. Um, I, I would like to address it. I, I apologize if I confused you in my, my answer. So we do have a regular maintenance program. What I was trying to define was that that maintenance program is continually being refined on how we identify if there's a potential water. Um, the reclamation, reclamation system isn't as efficient as we'd like to see it. So we're just adding an extra step to make sure that we're keeping it at its efficiency all the time, uh, in our system. But we do ma- regularly maintain those systems.
Attorney, do you have a comment?
I'm just pulling up the conditions real quick.
I just, I'm hearing something that, and I'm not sure if I heard you correctly, but I just want to make ask that I understand that the reclamation system is onsite. It's not something the city does.
Correct.
Thank you. I thought I heard you say that the city doesn't have a program to reclaim water. So I just wanted to be sure that, that what we're talking about is your onsite reclamation system that recycles that water through the system.
Yeah, I didn't actually say our city doesn't have that. I said that we don't have, the planning department doesn't have any requirement.
Oh, I see. I misunderstood what you said. Thank you for allowing me to clarify that.
So again, if I'm understanding your question correctly, and please correct me if I'm not, um, as far as adding a condition that they are maintaining the reclamation system, that is well within the council's purview to add that as a condition to approval of the P U D, the amendment to the P U D. Council, any further questions for the applicant?
Just my thought would be on that is how do we enforce that? How's that enforced?
That's what I was going to say, Kelly.
Thank you, Catherine.
Well, i- if the condition is proposed to be added, um, the way Champion Express is monitoring, monitoring the efficiency is the water use bills. Um, and of course, that varies with how many cars you get, um, per day or per week or per year. Uh, but it's a calculation of the average. You can just look at averages, um, and see what that efficiency is. That is the, the only way I can think of, uh, since Champion Express is already doing it themselves or proposing to do it. As far as enforcement, I, that's, that's, that's a staff thing, but that's how we're monitoring.
And I'm just, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, I'm sorry. I should ask you for permission, but correct me if I'm wrong, that your reclaimed water, other than the system to reclaim it, uh, actually reduces your water bill because you're not using that much fresh water. So if you weren't reclaiming water, your water bill, the, the amount you're reclaiming would increase your water usage on your bill each month, right? So if you're not reclaiming water, you got to use fresh water. So the reclaimed water reduces your water usage.
Correct.
Correct. So it's to a benefit to you all to take that into account because water's not cheap.
Correct.
So it, there's incentive there built in, I would say, for the business management, for their expense management to monitor that and make sure that the reclamation system is working. Just a thought. Thank you.
Well, you asked if the city could monitor that. I would say that our, uh, sales tax will, uh, reflect the type of volume of sales, therefore the number of cars by mathematical formula, um, and that.
It's a service. There's no sales tax on a service.
And a restaurant gives a sales tax.
The water usage on the bill would be the maintenance, the, the item that would be the item to monitor. And that's, that's a burden on staff instead of a burden on applicants.
Well, you've just brought up a whole nother point, and that is the, uh, if it's a service and there's no sales tax, so there's, what's our increase in our revenues for changing this P U D? City manager, would you like to weigh in on that?
There would be no change in our revenues from what they currently are.
No, if it was a restaurant versus a car wash.
I don't have that number up top of my head, but I can get back to you on what the average restaurant does.
Well, I would like to state that it's been posed as a restaurant use since two thousand and five. And nothing has been placed there. And then the lot next door is also, can also allow a restaurant and nothing has been placed there.
But it's, it becomes a commercial property tax. Uh, you know, I mean, it's already, it's already property that's taxed, but it becomes a business that's taxed as well and developed. Yeah, so it's not, not a benefit in that essence. So developed land is always a benefit. So we also, um, uh, have you finished your presentation? I'm sorry. Um, council, if you don't have any further questions for the applicants, um, I'm going to ask Suzanne if she has anyone signed up for public comment. We're going to go ahead and do that.
I do. We have, um, Dan Taylor.
Wow. Do you need me to state my name? No.
I just stated it for you, but. Who are you?
I hope you all realize that a lot of this is brand new information that was not presented to, to planning commission. Uh, like Kip said, you know, these are fresh numbers and information that's all being presented this week. And, uh, you know, planning commission was not privy to any of this, uh, or most of this, uh, new data. And I do believe that, uh, this is a response to me standing up at planning commission and bringing these issues up. Uh, and now they've gone back and come back with new revised, uh, data. So what I had planned tonight to say is all kind of being thrown away because, uh, of all this new information. because of all this new information that's being presented for the very first time. A couple of comments that I wrote down. First of all, there was a question about chemicals in the, in the waste and Kip being able to handle that, all those chemicals and really my, my position on that too is that it's, it's all very innocuous chemicals. I'm sure Kip would agree with that. Then there's a big discussion about regulating water usage from a tap. And I know in my discussions with Kip, and I agree with him, that he said, it's really, really difficult and probably not a good idea to try and do something like that. My, I own car washes and my usage is not regulated. I don't think it'd be fair to the applicant to all of a sudden regulate their usage or their reclaim system or anything of that nature, because I don't have those stipulations. The restaurant comparison now, when I was collecting data earlier this spring on the subject, I called Judy because we're comparing to a quick service restaurant. Our McDonald's in town was using approximately 30,000 gallons a month, which is right in line with what Kip said earlier. The Champion Car Washes that I checked on in Alamosa and Canyon City were using last winter at the same time approximately 10 times that. But their average was three, when their reclaim system was working, 321,000 gallons a month for each one of those sites, which is, by the way, similar sized car wash, similar demographics. I don't know why they picked the ones out that they did to, for comparison, but they also did not bring up that Albuquerque has a significant number of car washes. Yes, it's a bigger city, much bigger, but in fact, so many car washes there that has become a problem with their city council. And there's a new story about that that is in my packet. In which, by the way, that, that news story from Albuquerque even interviewed the Champion Express trainer Christie Hagerty, who said, quote, "On average with all our sites, a good 500", meaning each one of them washes 500 cars a day. You know? If we look at Champion Express water bills that, that we got from Alamosa and Canyon City, like I said, 321,000 gallons a month. If we're talking about, you know, an average now, last time, first time actually in February that Champion was here, they said they were gonna use 17 gallons, I believe, water, fresh water per car. Then at planning commission, they came in, changed that to 20. And now at this meeting, they've now come in and changed it to 30. So I don't know what's happening with those numbers, but they are changing continually. Let me go back to a few other notes. So the pass by reduction is really confusing me as well because they are still washing those cars. And I don't know why you exclude those from the traffic counts, but for some reason, they're saying you don't count those cars that, even because they're, they don't have an intention and are leaving home with the intention of going to the car wash. But as they're passing by, they still turn in there and they still wash their car and they still leave. But for some reason, we're not allowed to count those. And with Kip used the 131 that cars per day that they know, provided they didn't provide that information before. But that was with the pass by reduction, which I believe, you know, as far as water is concerned, all those people are still using water, even though they didn't plan on stopping there. So there's still traffic, still using water, should be counted. I still believe, just based on the industry, which I saw that the whole presentation that I wasn't able to complete at planning commission, I was asked to, to wrap up my presentation early. So I wasn't able to complete my presentation, but the whole thing was included in, in the packet for you. But I went out and started gathering data. And by the way, am I timed yours, Suzanne?
Oh, you're not. It's at the mayor's discretion because your public comment of an item on the agenda.
So you'll see as I went out and started collecting data on this from the industry, publications and articles that have been written, various sources, they all came back and said the same thing. These car washes with, I'm gonna, wash club generally wash on an average four to 500 cars per day. So their claim of 250 is on the low side. It's now coming up. From what they initially said, they, they initially came in and told planning mission it was 240 cars per day on the very peak day. And now they're saying that's an average day. So they are adjusting their numbers upwards, but like I said, it's another thing that keeps changing with every meeting. Let's go back to talking about this water discussion. When we called last winter Canyon City Utilities, we got a shock and surprise that last October, the Canyon City Champion Express used 2 million gallons of water in one month. And then the next month in November, 1.6 million gallons. Then it started to drop in December, 882,000. And then we're back to the normal in January, 300,000, February, 300,000. So the numbers that I saw up here presented today of, you know, 4 million gallons of water without the reclaim working, their Canyon City facility alone, used 4 million gallons in three months. So I do have a suggestion about water usage though, because what they're claiming, the water they need to wash these cars can be supplied with a three quarter inch tap. Now, what they're asking for is, I believe, an inch and a half tap. Is that right? And they've also, in Kip's notes, they seem to be indicating they want to tap into a main that is extra high pressure, if I understood Kip's notes correctly. And, and not where the planned tap was to be, which is apparently a lower tap, which is gonna cost them more. But I don't know why you'd need a very high pressure, one and a half inch water tap. If you're saying you're only gonna wash 22 cars in an hour and use 30 gallons per car. That's about 11 gallons a minute. You can get that from a garden hose. So I've updated my math a little bit using this 131 cars. And I was trying to keep up with all these new numbers that were being rolled out. But, you know, in general, what they're saying here, if you calculate the water usage they're proposing with the traffic they're proposing at this car wash, they're really saying that they're gonna spend $5 million on this car wash, but they're planning to do one quarter of the business that they're doing in Alamosa and Canyon City. I don't know about you, but that doesn't make sense to me. And the facility they're building has a pretty good capacity, but they're saying we're not gonna use a fraction of that. Why would you spend a lot of money, buildings, car wash to wash a huge amount of cars? And not plan to use it?
Oh, my gosh.
So the point of all this is that these traffic numbers have been, they're purposely trying to give you low numbers. And the reason is that as soon as they go above a threshold, they're gonna trigger CDOT, which by the way, they convinced with their letter, they pulled out first because their extra expense was fixing the traffic problems they were gonna cause. They sent a letter to CDOT, which I have, and then CDOT responded and said, okay, since you're gonna generate this little bit of traffic that you're claiming, we're gonna rescind all requirements for an access permit or traffic impacts then. And that's why they will not admit how much traffic they're gonna generate. Because they don't want to pay for those improvements. Well, like I said, my presentation kind of got butchered because this is all new information, but is there any questions I can answer?
Council, any questions for Dan?
Well, I, I want to thank you, Dan, because your testimony at the planning commission did cause me to really look at it, because I know you, you run car washes and I use yours. Which is why the, all of those numbers did appear to be adjusted as a reaction to the questions and data you presented at the planning commission. So it was new numbers, which is what triggered my questions to both CJ and Kip. Do you still stand on the recommendation to approve it with these new numbers? Because you're right, it's a lot of things changed. You've laid out a fairly decent, what do you want to call it, prosecution or a defense or whatever. Does Mr. Allen or Steve or Tess, do you have any kind of a response after Dan finishes?
And I'll let you finish. Yeah. Can I make it clear? If they're honest about all their traffic and they go through the rules and, and everything gets approved based on real good information, I wouldn't be here at all. I will say nothing. That's perfectly fine. It's the only reason I'm here is, is that they are a competitor coming in. I realized right away what was going on and I really felt the need to stand up and say something. And that reminded me of, we talk about water usage and when I say this, this place can do 1,000 cars a day, and now they've, they've said it has the capability, they said it, you know, they, they can turn that up to 120 cars an hour. And that's true. Now, Sonny's Car Wash, I don't know if you saw this in the stuff that I presented, but Sonny's Car Wash is the largest, the world's largest manufacturer of tunnel car wash equipment. And so there's a great link to an article written by the CEO of Sonny's about car wash volume and how to tune it. And the general rule of thumb is that you start at one car per hour, per foot of conveyor. So in this case, what you'd start at for a speed, for optimal speed, is 100 cars an hour. And you adjust that based on your specific conditions, how clean the cars are and whatnot. But so getting to 1,000 cars a day, not outside the facility's capability, in fact, it can do more than that in 11 hours easily. Now, what these companies typically do when they start up a new location is they will go for a week or two and offer free car washes to anyone who wants to drive in at any time. And so you're gonna be testing that limit from day one. You'll see how many cars that we can fit through there, and you'll see the traffic impact in the first two weeks. So I wouldn't believe that 250 cars in a day is all you're gonna see there. It's gonna be 1,000. And from my experience, it'll be 1,000 on their busiest days as well. And here's why. So we use a company called Everwash that provides membership services for car washes. That's all I do. And this is an email from Mark Leventhal, who's the, let's see, chief, chief operating officer. So he says, "A retail customer in a car wash will generally wash their car four times a year. A member will wash their car three times a month. That's nine times more." So when you talk about water usage and recycling water, now you've got a wash club that's washing, people are washing their cars nine times more than they would if they had to pay retail. And in our fledgling membership club, that's exactly what we're seeing. We're seeing those numbers. So that's where I keep hearing, you know, where are you gonna come up with 1,000 cars to wash? They're gonna have 3,000 to 4,000 members. If you get a busy Saturday in March, when, you know, the weather's nice, everyone wants to wash the car at the same time. I know that happens all the time. Everyone gets the same idea at the same time. You get 25% of those people, those members, which are 70% of their business, the rest is retail. You've already got almost 1,000 people right there and their members, plus the retail customers coming in. So not hard to reach 1,000 cars and the facility will do it. Is there any more questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Kip, I'm gonna, I'd like for you to respond to if, if, if his numbers are potentially accurate and their numbers are potentially inaccurate. What's your position on that?
That's a lot of water. Sorry.
Is there any way we can validate these numbers? I mean, how are Dan so different than the applicants?
I, I don't know. I, I calculate the numbers I'm giving, I'm given, try to make common sense of it. It's a tough decision.
Right.
I can tell you this, I can tell you our, our water treatment plant will produce 2 million gallons a day at full capacity.
Right. So do any of the applicants have a response to why the numbers are so different?
Mayor, could you expand it to not just the water numbers, but perhaps the traffic analysis numbers too?
Sure.
Yeah, I want to start with the traffic numbers and then the comments about CDOT. And then why the Champion Express originally pulled out, the reason they originally pulled out construction numbers and the site then hit the bottom line. It was reevaluated and then after that, that's when Champion Express came back and what appeared to, that the bottom line would work at that time. There were traffic improvements proposed that did come from city staff regarding a improvement, not on 24, but within the Walmart PUD itself. And that was generated by three developments. There is a development proposed to the north of the Champion Express Car Wash, which is, I don't think they have an active application, but it's a multifamily complex. And then on the lot south of the Champion Express Car Wash, the use proposed use right now as it is, and the PUD is a gas station. The property owner is choosing now to build that gas station. I'm not sure where they are with their application either anymore, or if it's active application. So all three developments is where that comment originally came from. And the biggest trip generator would have been the multifamily. I think it was up to 240 units that they were proposing north of the Champion Express Car Wash. Now to the CDOT comments and the access permit. In CDOT's access code, you will need a new access permit if you're producing more than 20% of the original calculated traffic generation of the use that was approved there, which was the QSR. The car wash produces 20% less than what the QSR, or more than 20% less than what the QSR is proposing. It's actually 50, 50% less. And then in the presentation, I did show numbers for the pass by rating and without the pass by rating. CDOT has that IT manual. They can make their own assumptions if the car wash will, i- i- if it's warranted, the car wash uses a pass by rating or does not use a pass by rating. In my experience, they have declined that pass by rating just from other developments outside of car wash and said, no, you cannot use that. We don't think that applies here. This time they chose to accept that pass by rating. And again, they do have access to those numbers without a pass by rating. And then the pass by rating was used because the numbers that are, that the IT manual base its generation off of, or again, from New York, Washington DC and New Jersey, which are much larger populations than here in Woodland Park. So we felt it appropriate to use that pass by rating. And on the traffic and the membership, I think Alan spoke on that, but I'll let him speak on that again. And then as far as the water use to verify, we can provide the bills, as Alan spoke of earlier. The city of Windsor made Champion Express provide all the water bills for similar sized car washes and similar sized city. They took that information, they took some time with it, and that building permit was issued on Monday. They took that information. They took some time with it and that building permit was issued on Monday. So to verify the numbers, those bills can be provided. I have an Excel spreadsheet, the one I sent to Kip, which breaks it down month by month. And the reason why we did use the locations that we provided to Kip is those have been in operation for over a year with the exclusion of the Vernal site. Yeah, with the exclusion of the Vernal site and Alamosa uses the same recycling system. That was the reason why Alamosa was provided to Kip as far as water use numbers on a month to month usage calculation. And then to speak towards the other car washes that Mr. Taylor provided. I think Alan has his hand raised on those.
Okay, Alan, if you'd like to chime in, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Wow. So I agree. There's a lot of information being provided. And to be honest, Dan, Dan surprised us in the P and Z meeting. We had a presentation. We were not prepared that Dan was even going to present. He submitted something to P and Z with a whole lot of data on it. And so we've taken the time to take that report that he gave to y'all. And we've gone through and we've provided information. So I have a, I actually would be interested to know, just out of curiosity, what Dan is experiencing in his car washes in Woodland Park as far as per day. It almost seems like he would be an indicator of if it's going to be 250 or or 1,000 and he's claiming 1,000. So that kind of confuses me as well. I have to be honest, I'm a little frustrated at this because there is so much information that has been thrown out. What I can tell you is the reason we came back with the information that we did was because we were addressing what I felt like was almost accusations that we were not providing honest information. And that's not, that's not at all the truth. What we did provide the second time around is actual numbers, invoices, water usage, reclaim, car counts. Those are actual data that we can provide, actual numbers. What we've done then also is we're trying to show our our traffic counts, which are based on data, third party data, not only by C dot, but by an international. I mean, what everybody uses to use traffic generation trip counts. I I can understand if Dan doesn't believe that, but that's what the industry uses and that's what we use to model. As far as how the operation, that why would we build a $5 million system that can handle 1,000 cars when it's only going to do 250? My only answer to that is that you're you're going to build your car wash. It's going to cost 5 million. So the systems are so efficient, Sunny decides, you know, designs them to be that efficient. They can handle that many cars. They're designed to do that. It doesn't indicate that it's going to be that for that particular site. But we use the same package for, you know, our our medium, small markets. They're a longer tunnel, but they're still the same system and they're still designed for efficiencies to go up to 100 to 120 cars per hour, 30 seconds a car. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the market's going to do that. What determines what the market's going to do is what we use for demographics and what we use for cars that come by the site. That's real data and that's what we use to model off of. Are we going to get 250? That's what we're projecting. Is it going to be more than that? I would, I would, as a business, we probably would like to see that. But the but the numbers don't show it. The numbers don't. The numbers don't produce that. That's why we've modeled at 250. This is a small market for us. It's part of our regional play. And then the last thing I would say why we do memberships. And this is coming. Let's see if the the second biggest investment a family has is their vehicle. And so as they have vehicles that they're taking care of them, so they buy a membership, they go through the car wash a couple of times a month because they're invested in their investment to keep it the best it can be. That's the only reason I can, you know, talk about why people would take a membership and why we go to memberships. We provide a great quality car wash. I just don't know how else to answer. If you have some questions for me, I'd be more than happy to, but answer. Just don't know if I'm just making it worse right now for y'all.
And I'll add on to one thing that came up that I forgot to answer as far as why the numbers change three times. The first time we submitted was for the PUD and site plan. We knew the site plan would have to happen after the PUD. So we said, well, it's, we don't need it for the PUD. Let's submit the general numbers. And then of course, as far as traffic goes and water use notes, we got comments back from the city engineer saying these numbers need to be revised to be more accurate to show average annual daily traffic. So instead of using those general numbers for the site plan, which is a separate process from the PUD to evaluate traffic, we provided those numbers and said, well, let's go ahead and include it in the PUD application since we're putting them in together. The third time for the change again was when we received Mr. Taylor's comments. I was like, all right, well, we can't generalize anymore. Let's give actual water use numbers. And then let's refine our traffic numbers a little more, which is the comment that came from the city engineer as far as give you the average daily traffic. And those are the numbers you're seeing today with and without the pass by rating. Now, the projection, the general production, projection that we gave for cars in the beginning for 240 is right in between the projection for 327 and the projection with the pass by reduction of 131. It's kind of cutting that right in the middle. So that's the reasons for the changes as we progressed here. So the numbers that we presented today will be the numbers we're using to address everything in the site plan. And it's C dot has a second number. It's up to staff to accept those numbers after seeing the water bills and after seeing the charts that we provided them.
Sure. I just wanted to ask staff, there's a third pad site there as well, which is to the west or across that accent, the road that goes to the trailer park. It's, it's one of the lots that has this same allowed uses, correct? The Eden and those kinds of uses.
It's similar, and I believe it's actually in the presentation of the staff report in that table. And I believe it's flagged as a in Eden.
Yeah. And there's no interest in that at this time, correct?
Correct. We have not talked to anybody about that particular lot.
But that will also access off that road and will impact traffic on that road eventually if that ever develops.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add a little point of clarification too on that, just in some of the discussion that we've had about these sites? So traffic was a big part of the whole discussion and in coordination with C dot and the city, we're looking at not just one project individually getting approved, but how do all these different projects impact that intersection in particular that we all anecdotally know just doesn't work? And so the the big thing for this site design, if you look at the way that it's currently configured, was the driveway access is at the best and furthest location, a way to provide that stacking distance and that traffic circulation pattern that would be most effective. It's the best location that you can have on the site. You'll also notice on the southern portion, there's unencumbered room there for potential improvements to that intersection. And obviously, those are all things that would need to be, you know, worked through. But that traffic discussion in planning for the future, regardless of how everything else builds out, this site was the first in. So we had to make those comments to make sure that we were planning for how that could be incorporated instead of putting a building. And then you've got to tear it out.
Absolutely. As you should. Thank you so much for clarifying that.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicants?
I have one for Kip.
Yes, I do.
Our, our current reservoir, we have whole, how many acre feet?
55.
And if we do acre foot every three days for wastewater for a car wash and it still looks okay?
I think you know the answer to that.
So Kip, my question is also for you. If Dan's numbers rise to the level development wise or whatever, if his numbers rise to be credible as let's say we approve the process, in a worst case scenario, what's that look like for the city? What's that look like in terms of our ability to govern our water usage in a free market economy? If we don't have some mechanism upfront to ensure that they they operate in the optimum efficiency. Where are we at? I mean, you know, we go down the road here and it's like you got all this water usage and it impacts all of our citizens. We're saying, well, they have a right to have their car washed and they do. But if they are not operating optimally, and we heard of two in the state, Alamosa and and Canyon City that are using way more. What's that do for us? What what's our vulnerabilities that putting us in? If we're saying, sure, let's change the the PUD. Let's go ahead and allow this to happen. It's free enterprise after all. But if we don't have something that can govern that, and I know it might not be music to Dan's ears either, that we have some way of monitoring something which is a large usage of water to the city.
If I knew what their numbers would be, it'd be, it'd be an easy decision, but I don't. I can go off of what Dan says or what Tez says. I can't answer the question. It's, it's a lot of water either way. How do you, how does city council want to spend their water? That's what you need to wrestle with with this. And you'll have to wrestle with this many other times coming up. There's many other projects on the books where this exact discussion is going to take place. I'm sorry I'm vague, but it's what are the real numbers?
Right.
If if it's 1,000 cars per day, that's a lot of water. I wouldn't want to be in that position.
And if it is 1,000 a day and the reclamation is optimum, that's a lot less number than an operation that is not. And so that's the area where I think we have some governance ability to to put some sort of control mechanism in it that's reasonable and, you know, agreed it's technology as well, but because there's to say, oops, you know, a year from now. It's not the time to be doing it. If we can look at something proactively now, it's fair to everybody involved, but also guards what is obvious to many of us is our water supply.
I can't imagine with the car washes that are in Colorado Springs and the car washes that are here and a population that we have, we only have 25,000, 26,000 people in the whole county. I can't imagine how we would ever get to 1,000 people every day in that population that would wash their car.
I can. We have a lot of toy traffic. We have a lot of vacation traffic. I'm just saying, going through our, going through our city, so they go out and they get their car all muddy on the weekend and they're coming back. Oh, great. There's a car wash. Well, the park do it before we get into town. Traffic's really hectic. I mean, there's a real obvious.
I have a solution to that question. Why don't you ask Dan how many cars he gets? Because he owns, what, two, three car washes up here already? So if it's going to get up to 1,000 a day, Dan will know. Has Dan experienced 1,000 cars a day?
You know, I can't say for sure between all of ours. And first of all, can I comment on Alan's comments about comparing our car washes and they really are very different because the the Champion Express is a conveyorized car wash. It's set up for volume. My car washes are touch free and based. They're not set up to do huge volume of cars. So we have had days where, you know, our facility, the way it's configured right now is maxed out. And I'm going to decline to say what that number is because it's proprietary information. But I will say that between the five car washes, including Divide, that we own on the busiest days, I'm sure that we've been way over 1,000 cars that we've washed in one day. And by the way, the 1,000 cars, just to be clear, is a maximum. I never want to say that this is a everyday occurrence. These are the maximum days of the year.
Spread out through several different car washes, not just one in particular.
Well, no, I mean, for the champion car wash, they're not going to wash. There's no way they'll wash 1,000 cars every day, every day as an average. You know, they are going to be down into what I believe is probably the 400 car on an average. They, in some days, it'll be close to zero or zero if they're closed down. So that's where you get that spread. Did it answer the question?
I think so.
While I'm up here, could I just say one more thing? I saw in the minutes from the planning commission that I was quoted as saying that I was questioning whether the city had enough water to supply this. And that's something I would never question because I don't know anything about that. So I don't know if that can be changed. I saw it was a draft, but I don't believe I said that. Okay, I don't want to imply that I know anything about our water supply.
Thanks for the clarification.
From a staff perspective, we can check the recording.
Okay.
Just one quick, not rebuttal, but again, I gave Kip these numbers Tuesday. When we last talked, I told him it's like, I'm going to get these to you a week or more before the hearing. So Kip not being able to answer these questions based on water use, he, I'm sure he would have grilled me if he got them sooner and had the time. He's a busy guy. So that's an apology to him to, we gave them to him Tuesday night. So he hasn't really had a chance to digest these numbers fully and really start digging in and asking these questions. So yeah, I just wanted to say that.
I'm just wondering if there's any ones that wanted to talk.
Do we have anyone else signed up?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, anything further? Comments, questions? Okay. Kip, since you only got these numbers recently, do you feel like you've had enough time to answer our questions adequately? Given with what you have?
I can do easy math. It's, it's easy math. It truly is. It's what will the actual use be?
Right. Okay.
Okay, that's, that's what, that's what I wrestle with in my head. Because if it's the higher end, it's pushing our supply. It's the lower end. It's just like another commercial business. If it's in the middle, do the math. So I, I I can't give you the warm and fuzzies either way. It's a tough decision. We have limited amount of commercial land left and it's up to council to wrestle with what they see as best for our community.
Thanks.
And I will do my best to guide you on the waterfront every time.
Right. And the reason I asked was if I didn't know if an extension may help with your analysis, but if if you feel that you've had adequate time to analyze what's been given to you, then that's fine.
I mean, we can look at it further. It's just what will the actual use be?
Right. And there's no way to know. So
In my opinion.
Right. Okay. Sure.
Well, given that we're ready to make a motion on this, and I would like to put a qualifier in it to approve it, subject to this going back to planning and be evaluated in the permitting process and be evaluated for the recycling and how and to whatever degree it's appropriate that the that this is run at its maximum efficiency for reclamation so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where they hit the 1,000 and we're scrambling with multiple variables that we can't, we have, would then have no control over. I think the only way we'd have any control over it is if it was upfront. So that would be my proposed, if we were to do. Robert, if you can structure that into a proper motion, I will second that. I agree with you.
Can I, before we do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the appropriate place for conditions be ZDP instead of? Is the appropriate place for conditions be ZDP instead of this approving an amendment to the existing PUD? I'm just asking from a perspective of where are the appropriate place for that to lie? If we put a condition of that nature?
And I would tack on that question to the attorney. Can we discriminate against this car wash but we didn't discriminate against any others in that manner?
Agreed.
Aaron also asked me that same question. I've been looking into it since he's been asking. So I just need a little bit more time to look into that real quick.
Sure.
Can we make a motion to delay this vote until next council meeting?
Next council. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I would move that we extend the public hearing on, what's this?
1457.
On 1457 until September 7th meeting.
In order for the.
In order for, just go ahead.
For the city attorney.
Yeah, in order for the city attorney to give us accurate legal advice.
The proper word is, I think, continue the public. We have a choice. Do you want to close the public comment portion of the public hearing? Because you can close the public comment. We can be done with public comment. And then you just bring it back and you do the public hearing.
Yes.
That's what we typically do.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. So let's structure the motion. I move to continue the.
First to close the public hearing.
All right, okay, okay. Well, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 1457 series 2023 and continue the public hearing until September 7th, 2023.
I'll second.
Yeah, I will repeat that back just so you make sure that I have it correctly. That Councilmember Neil has made the motion to close the public comment portion of ordinance number 1223 and continue the public hearing portion of 1223 to September 7th.
It's 1457.
1457.
1457.
And then do you want me to add until the city attorney, for the city attorney to supply you with more information?
I will amend my motion to add to allow the city attorney to render opinions regarding the questions asked tonight.
A second. We'll agree to that.
Okay. Okay, council, you may vote. Suzanne, although, yes, I'm still not getting it. Okay, thank you for the verbal. Okay, thank you. Council motion has passed unanimously 6-0. We'll put this on the next council agenda.
Thank you to the applicants for your patience and time in your presentation as well.
Wendy's is awake.
Yeah, given the hour, can we take a five minute break?
Sure. Five minutes. Be back at 9:09, please. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We're off to item number 10, new business, and that is resolution 906. And we have Ben Schmidt is our presenter.
Thank you. So this is a more procedural item that basically there's a detention pond up on Majestic Parkway that I think we're all familiar with next to the statue. And this is just the city's adoption of that for maintenance. It's gone through the warranty period. It's been inspected by the city staff and so we're ready to take this on as another detention pond for our staff to maintain.
And I'm sorry, Ben, where is that retention?
This is on Majestic Parkway up by the roundabout and the statue.
Jesse, probably.
Okay, yeah, the paper streets.
Oh, the paper streets.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, and there's retention from up from your place.
Yeah, so it's on the northwest side of that intersection.
Weekend job?
Sorry.
Your weekend job?
Yeah.
Council, any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Suzanne, is there? There's no one here for this, is there?
No, ma'am.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 906 series 2023 of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, authorizing the transfer of a tract to the city for a detention pond and associated drainage facilities.
I'll second.
Counsel, it's ready for you to vote. Suzanne, I'll vote yes.
Fish.
Mayor approach to a case, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Motion.
Yeah, until they run out.
Motion has passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. We are off to reports. And I have several dates to announce. August 17th to 20th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Saddle Club grounds between Walmart and Safeway is the Woodland Park Rock Gem and Jewelry Show with over 40 vendors that have mineral specimens from all over the world, gold panning lessons, flint napping demonstrations. And this event is free for the whole family to enjoy. August 18th to 19th, starting at 10:00 AM in Memorial Park, is the Salute to American Veterans Rally. Come to honor, respect, and remember American veterans at their greatest gathering west of the Mississippi. August 17th to 19th, at Woodland Park Middle School Ball Field, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Traveling Wall is currently on display. August 19th at 10:00 AM from Woodland Park High School will be the starting point of the POW MIA recognition ride. Registration for that ride begins at 7:30 AM. August 24th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, the Ute Pass Cultural Center is hosting a free end of summer community concert with live music from local favorite Carrie Dell. And there will be food trucks and a cash bar. August 26th at 7:00 PM, the Lightbulb Theater Company and Ute Pass Cultural Center present Lights Out. A thrilling experience where 10 new plays will be written, rehearsed, and performed in only 24 hours. What could go wrong? Tickets are $10 each and can be purchased online or at the door. Councilmember Case.
Just a couple things. Mayor, the wall is at the middle school from yesterday through the 20th. The rally is the 19th and 20th. And the POW MIA recognition ride is the 20th. So I just wanted to make sure that those dates, I think they were a day behind. Sorry to correct you, but I just wanted to make sure the dates were correct.
So the ride is on Saturday?
It is.
That's the main theme.
There's a poker run on Friday, starting at the VFW at nine o'clock.
But the ride on is the 19th if it's Saturday.
Saturday, the 19th, it starts at 10 o'clock from the high school is the ride to.
So shoot me because I'm wrong. Yes.
So 7:30 on Saturday is the registration start for the ride, which leaves the high school at Saturday at 10 o'clock for Kripo Creek. Sorry, turned by noon.
Shoot me in the head. No, we're good, right? Okay. It's been a long day. Hillary, my apologies.
It's okay. I just wanted to tell you all that at the PPACG meeting on the 9th, CDOT updated us that bids are in process this year and construction will be in 2024 for the signal replacement at Trout Creek Road and Aspen Garden in Paradise. And the timing on our highway that they did such a great job with a couple summers ago will be maintained. So when you see those new headlights going in, they're aware that what they're doing is working as far as timing and they will maintain that. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. And then another thing, after our discussion last council meeting about the signature events funding and leaving the PRAB board with the responsibility and accountability for making the final decision on funding. We've had this conversation, I don't know if it was this council or what, before that they're a volunteer board and we are the elected officials. And the accountability for those decisions, in my opinion, should not be placed on a volunteer board. Because sometimes the public doesn't agree with such things. And so to place that. And so to place that burden of that accountability to the citizenry, in my opinion, should be placed with the elected officials. And I just wanted to share that with you to for food for thought to think about. Because the buck should stop here and not with a volunteer board. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you. That's all I have.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Zula.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Nakai.
Um, I just have the Harvest Center and Master Gardener's Greenhouse and Garden Tour is Saturday, August twenty sixth from nine AM to two PM in Woodland Park and Sunday, August twenty seventh, nine AM to two PM around Teller County. And for more information, you can go to wpharvestcenter.org.
Very good. Councilmember Connors.
I could say several things. First things, let me clarify some of these times for Friday, eighteen August. There's the CBMA High Altitude Poker Run, which will start at the VFW. And the last bike out leaves at eleven o'clock from the VFW heading over here to Memorial Park. Starting at ten o'clock at Memorial Park, they're going to be giving away the Red Friday T-shirts. That's the Remember Everyone Deployed T-shirts. They'll be giving those away at ten o'clock. Saturday, the nineteenth, we'll start the registration for the POW MIA Ride, which starts at seven thirty at the Woodland Park High School in the parking lot. And all those riders should be departing around ten o'clock headed for Kippa Creek and returning back here to Woodland Park at noon time. And then there'll be ceremony at Woodland Park. And of course, all the booths will be open and everything. We're dedicating two plaques that are memorial. So that's it for the weekend for veterans. So I was in my backyard looking for a bird, saw it, couldn't understand what it was. It was the biggest gray thing I've seen. So of course, I took a chance and looked it up on Google, and you can understand some of the things you can get from Google, but I did find this. So this book here is Mountain Birds of Teller County. It's a pocket guy. It's put out by Joe LaFleur. I do not know who Joe is, but he does the BetterBirdWatching.com. It has every bird that sits at my house. It's really incredible. So I got this from Amazon. I think it's ZB, the shoe place in town, I think, has them in stock. Oh, there we go.
Way to go, Eric.
So awesome.
So what was the gray bird? What was the gray bird?
Oh, it's some kind of piper that doesn't actually live here. He's just hanging out. But uh, but if you saw how many owls we have here, so that's pretty fabulous. But yeah, this is a really cool book.
Yes, I got my copy at Georgian Land Place.
Okay, there you go, ZB.
Yep, Councilmember Harvey.
I have nothing.
Good question. I will look at my magic notes.
The chief probably knows. He's holding ten fingers up, which I.
Ten o'clock. What time I have.
Would hold up the fingers for when it's done.
I would suggest doing any business in town before ten o'clock or after eleven o'clock AM. So between ten and twelve would probably be a good time to come watch all the motorcycles right away.
All right, with that, oh, we have city attorney. Do you have any?
Um, I don't have any reports, but Jeff did send me up here with a mission, and it's not going to be as good as if Jeff were here. But I do have your biweekly dad joke. What did zero say to eight? Nice belt. I know it was really bad. Jeff would have done it better. Um, but.
That's cute.
Aaron.
Suzanne, would you like to give your report first?
It's a slow group.
Well, you know, I'll say this for Jeff. That's the best clean joke he's provided yet.
I found that one all on my own.
Oh, you found that. Good for you.
So counsel, I would like to give an update. As you know, there is a citizens initiative petition then that has been out and about being circulated in the community. And today, one of the representatives of the committee brought me a stack of petitions. In order for me to start counting the petitions, I needed one thousand seventeen signatures. Today, they furnished a stack with one thousand two hundred and twenty-two signatures, not verified yet. I need to be clear on that. With more to come on Monday, their goal is to get to approximately fifteen hundred. But as it stands, we have twelve twenty-two, so we can start the verification process of these signatures now.
Very good. City manager, Aaron.
All right, thank you. First, I would like to start off by saying that this morning at about six thirty in the morning, I had streets and field service crews out in my neighborhood because we had a main water break. And I just wanted to give a major shout out to all of those folks. They did an amazing job. They're still doing an amazing job right now. I was just thoroughly impressed. I'd like to give a major shout to them. All of our facilities guys getting everything ready for the rally this weekend, really impressed with them as well. I'd like to give a major shout out to them and to the police for providing all the traffic and security. So awesome job to our staff, getting everything ready for this weekend. All right, I have a sales tax update for you, counsel. This is for June sales tax collected in July. So this is our our latest information. Let me get my zoom. Okay, so for our three percent sales tax through June, we have collected three million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Sorry about that. Hundred, we're one hundred and sixty-five thousand two eighty-two up over last year, which is a four point four percent increase. So obviously, that is definitely some of the inflation that we've seen year over year. I don't know that we're necessarily busier than we were last year, but a lot of this is inflation based. Month, June over June, we're up one point nine percent, which is a fifteen thousand six hundred dollar increase. And then when we look at lodging tax, we're up three point seven percent year to date, six thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars. So we're pretty much right in line with where we were last year. And June over June, we were up point seven percent. So we're trending very, very close to what we did last year. If we look at our three year sales tax revenue, you can see that the dark black line is this year, and we're just, it's pretty consistent. We're up over the previous two years. It's showing pretty telling. I mean, it's nice to have consistency like that. We're almost every month, we're just a little bit over last year. So our budget projection was three percent, so we're four point four. So we're kind of right where we'd like to be.
Before you leave that slide, that that's raw dollars. It's not adjusted for inflation.
Raw dollars, yeah. If we're adjusting for inflation, yeah, we're down just lately. And in lodging revenue, this one is a little bit less predictive than the sales tax has been. We're we're up some months, we're down others. The dark blue line is this year, so it's fairly close to what we've been the last year. And last year was way up over the year before, so it's kind of trending in line with what we did last year. And then I know I've had several requests for this breakdown for year to date on what's lodging versus what's STR. So in twenty twenty-two, we were a forty sixty split with forty percent coming from lodging, sixty percent coming from STR. This year so far, it's thirty-nine percent lodging and sixty-one percent STR. So very, very close in line with what we saw last year. And that's all I have for you on this one. Any questions on that?
Those are good because I just saw Colorado Springs today, and they're down.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, they're down quite unexpectedly.
Really? Okay, I didn't see that. I'll have to check that out.
Yeah. Colorado Springs revenue is down quite a bit unexpectedly, so.
Wow. Okay.
Revenue tax in general, yeah.
Okay, and then on September seventh, we will have a budget workshop to go over council priorities and do sales tech projections and all of that for next year.
Yay.
So come, come ready. It's my favorite night of the whole year.
Are you going today? Are you needing an hour for that or longer?
I think an hour should be good. That's what we did.
Six o'clock? Okay.
Or no, five thirty.
Oh, that's right, five thirty. Five thirty, we'll have dinner for you, counsel.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.